Okay, great. Okay. Good morning. You are at the Palm Beach County zoning hearing. Today is July 6, 2023. I'd like to call to order. It looks like we have a quorum. Can you call the roll, please?
John Kern.
Here.
Mike Kelly.
Here.
Glenn Groth-Grohman.
Sherri Scarborough.
Here.
Lisa Rivers.
Yeah.
Alex Brumfield. Mark Beatty.
Here.
Vice Chair Pavlik.
Here.
Chair Sowers.
Here. Okay, opening prayer. Praise allegiance.
Yes, please stand for the prayer and the pledge. Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 a.m. in the Vista Center. Ken Rogers' hearing room, VC 1W 47, 4300 North Dog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider applications for zoning, official zoning map amendments, planned developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type 2 variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code, and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and Type 2 variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, or modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, 6th floor, at 9:30 a.m. on Wednesday, July 19, 2023, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct for quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. The communication with commissioners which occur outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such comments shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or at the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group, organization, must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. At this time, we have a motion to receive and file. Motion by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Pavlik. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Swearing in. Scott, pardon? Oh, proof of publication? Missed that? Oh. Good. Motion to receive and file. We did that. Okay. We already did that. Okay. Okay, you want to swear in, Scott?
All those wishing to testify or speak on any of today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Minutes. Everybody read the minutes? Any changes? Modifications? Everybody read them?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Amendments to the agenda.
We do have modifications to our agenda. Item number 1, ZVCA 2022-1490, the Islamic Center Church. We have a modification to Exhibit C 2 as it relates to a condition for access, modifying the timing of that particular condition. The same condition is noted in Exhibit C 3. Again, modifying the timing of the condition. Item 4, ZVZ 2022-5344, Seasons. There's a modification to all petition condition 4, modifying the timing due to the change in the hearing to July 5, a year from now. And then on the regular agenda, item 6, True Deliverance Church. We have a minor correction for code reference for our recommendation to 2B 7E. And the same for item 7, ZV 2022-1904, DeCosta Horn Marshals Road Lot Split. Again, a correction to the code reference to Section 2B 7E. And then in a modification to the summary table as it relates to what is required for what is proposed.
Okay, thank you. So basically cleanup. Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any requests to pull any items from the consent agenda? Nope.
Disclosures.
Pardon?
Disclosures.
Oh, disclosures.
Yes.
Any disclosures on any agenda item?
Yeah, Chairman, I met with the applicants and the homeowners of item number 7, as well as I met with staff for several hours on the same item number.
None.
Yes, I spoke with the applicant on item number 4, ZVZ 2002-00534.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
None.
Okay, and I have none.
I spoke with the applicant on item 7.
Okay. Thank you. And any conflicts or recusals?
I have a recusal. Consent agenda, item number 5. My firm, Architecture Green, has contracts with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to no postponements, right?
Correct.
Okay. And no withdrawals. Okay, so we have the motion for consent agenda?
Do we need to split it?
Oh, did I miss something?
Yeah, we need to pull five out.
So Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 1 through 4 on the consent agenda.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Pavlik. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 5 on the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'd like to clarify, I don't know what the cards are. We didn't have any cards for any of those, right?
We did not.
Okay, good.
Okay, that was the end of the consent agenda, so now we're at the regular agenda. Item 6, True Deliverance Church of God.
Yes, so item number 6 is SV 2022-1887, True Deliverance Church of God. The request before the board is a Type 2, a subdivision variance to allow access from an 80-foot access easement. Staff is recommending denial of the request, and we can turn it to the applicant for a presentation and then staff.
The applicant here, please come up.
This is the pastor, I guess.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, God bless you. My name is Pastor Whitehall. I am the pastor, the bishop, and representing the church this morning. I'm here to request a postponement, reason being my agent, the church agent, is unable to be here because of medical reasons. We had an attorney who had to recuse himself because of conflict of interest. He represent Indian Trail, from my understanding, and he wasn't able to take the case. He referred me to a couple of the lawyers, and I was referred to another lawyer. So I'm here today because, again, we are requesting a postponement because we haven't had time to sit down with staff, to sit down with the staff of Palm Beach County, to let them know what's going on. We've met with some of the neighbors to resolve the issues at hand, wasn't able to come to conclusion with that, so we're still trying to work with staff. I don't have a clue what's going on, to be honest with you right now. We, my agent's been out of town, called me yesterday to let me know that some things are going on that I'm not aware of, and, again, I'm kind of in the dark right now. That's why I'm requesting a postponement. He was supposed to submit that postponement and didn't do anything. So I'm here representing, again, the church, hoping that we can be able to sit down with the staff and figure out what's going on with this case. How did they come to this conclusion? Because we were told from the beginning that we can have the church there. The church spent thousands, tens of thousands of money to get to this point. Our last meeting was supposed to be on the 6th, I believe, of last month, postponed because we were getting information that it's not going to be approved. But I said, how did we get from there to here? We've been told to move forward. We've got sufficiencies on the applications, and now it seems as if everything's at a standstill. Again, Marty Perry represented the church, tried to sit down with the staff, and from my understanding, couldn't get anywhere. But when he realized that he was in conflict, he had to recuse himself. So, again, I am here just to answer a postponement so I can get proper representation and find out what is going on. Because the church has spent close to 500,000 persons in this property, and surveys, and so on and so forth. 15,000 on the agent, and so on and so forth. So we need a chance to sit down with staff to find out why and how did they get to this point after telling us that we can move forward.
Okay.
And this is my case.
Yeah, thank you. Is the postponement, does it need to be time certain without going back out for re-advertising?
Yes, actually, there was a law that was just passed, and it basically says that you can continue an item, an advertised item, a resolution in this case, if you announce at this hearing the date and time that it will be moved to, and also it needs to be included, obviously, in the next agenda for that. Before making a motion on that, I think maybe if staff has any response to that or thoughts on it.
Good morning, Olive Bailey, Assistant Land Development Director. The pastor did reach out to us yesterday, as well as Mr. Hackett, in regards to postponing the item, and we are okay with that as staff. So I don't have anything additional to say. I know Scott has had several conversations with the agent, he's the director, about the issues here, and that was why it was postponed the last time to this meeting, so...
Could we ask the pastor how much time he thinks he needs?
I believe we should be ready next month, the next meeting, the next hearing.
You sure that's enough time for hiring a lawyer and meeting with people and shaking things out?
Again, I'm...
To me, that's more of a 60, 90-day process.
I'm not aware of the process, because, again, I'm here representing the church alone, the folks that has those answers, but I believe 60, 60 to 90 days would be sufficient, and if need be.
Will we have a date for 90 days out?
I mean, that'll be fine for us as the land development staff, if that's helpful to the pastor and his team.
I'd like to weigh in on that. So what this request is for, the church bought a house in the acreage on an easement, and they're asking to turn the house into a place of worship. And the variance changes is requesting to have this church not on a right-of-way, dedicated to the public right-of-way, but on an easement that's maintained by Indian Trails Improvement District. So from zoning perspective, 60, 30, 90 days isn't going to change our point of view, whether or not they hire another attorney or whatever.
Well, it just gives them time to make the arguments, all I'm saying.
90 days, I think, is a bit excessive. I think 30 is fine, which would put us in, so that would be the zoning commission in August, whatever that is. But there's nothing's going to change from zoning perspective, even with council. So I would say that's the Thursday, the 3rd of August, is 60 days, give or take.
Can I answer a question? Why isn't anything going to change?
Article 4 requires places of worship to meet the local residential street standards, which are listed in Article 11. An applicant can't use the variance process in Article 11 to get around Article 4. There's no variances for uses in Article 4. This, from a zoning perspective, the site to take a house on a street with all sorts of other houses, that's a local street, and to change that to have a place of worship with 62 parking spaces, and to have the public visiting that church unwell-inseptic, doesn't meet our standards in Article 4 for where we're looking for citing places of worship. If you look at all of the other places of worship in the acreage, Loxahatchee, they're adjacent to Seminole Pratt Whitney or Orange, where their subdivision variances are for access because land development isn't allowing access for the place of worship onto State Road 7. They have to access on the side road, but any form versus function type of requirement, the operation of the place of worship is on a major county thoroughfare that is maintained by the county. This is a local residential street that, you know, the code in Article 11, Article 4 relies on the standards in Article 11. So the variance mechanism is not something that zoning can support.
Yeah. Since your request is postponement, I don't think this is a proper time to be discussing the merits of the petition. I think what we're here to talk about is the postponement.
Okay.
And I do believe you do need someone to represent you who is familiar with the LDRs and...
Correct.
Can argue to the positive petition of that aspect.
Okay.
So the question, then, is, is August the next meeting? Are you good with the next August meeting for that representation?
I'm good with that. Question for you, because we spoke about 60 to 90 days. If we can receive those 60 to 90 days, and this can be resolved in 30 days, can we return here within those 30 days?
I don't think so. It has to be time certain, right? Date certain?
Yeah, I think it sounds like, let's just meet in the middle. How about September?
I'm okay with September.
That's 60.
Or in July? Oh, yeah.
Time flies.
Yeah, September.
Okay, and then before making a decision, it'd be appropriate to allow public comment only as to the postponement.
Correct. Yeah. So, okay, so what we're going to entertain is a motion to postpone till September 60.
We want to hear from the public first.
Okay. All right. Well, I just want to make it clear that we're not talking about the petition this morning. We're talking about strictly postponing till September. So please restrain from any kind of comments, because we're not talking about the merits of the petition, just about the postponement. So if anybody from the public wants to comment about that, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Wait, right, just wait one minute, sorry. So I did want to mention, if we need to, for the record, do we need to mention these that were in here already, or no? Do we not need to? For those that wish to speak?
Yeah. They would come and speak, but they would speak on the postponement.
Only. And then those that didn't put something together for wish to speak need to fill out another card, if they have not done so already. Is that correct?
We've already started the item, so they can contact staff if they have any concerns.
Okay, all right. So what I just wanted to say is, with regard to item 6, we have seven cards that do not wish to speak that are just in opposition at this point, but that is, I know right now we want to just hear about the postponement. So I have eight cards here for people that said they did want to speak, but to reiterate what the chair said, it has to be with regard to the postponement, not regard to the actual item. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to read each name, and then go to two people, separate podiums, and then just state your name and address for the record. So first, Eric Baxter, and right behind that would be Rachel Donath.
Good morning. My name's Eric Baxter. I live at 12986 Tangerine Boulevard, the house across the street from the property. As far as postponement, I feel that these postponements tend to be a ploy to get the neighbors, I mean, because we've all taken off work, or we've all taken off time, we've got kids involved, it's a, you know, and to postpone and postpone, I mean, this is already the second postponement of this process. I think it's a little unfair to the residents to have to take time off work, lose money, spend time, to come here to, you know, to talk about the variance, and, you know, it's just on a one-sided thing. They have the control to postpone, and we don't have any control as far as we're kind of just being dragged along until the public gets tired of these postponements, and then we don't show up, or we can't afford to show up. I don't think that's quite right. I think there should be some type of a limit or something with this postponement thing, because this could go on for years, and what do we have as far as residents? We don't want to change our neighborhood, and we have to be dragged out, dragged out. Is this something that can potentially go on, or is there some way to nip it in the butt and say, okay, you have this postponement, and that's it? Or what can we do?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Rachel Donath. I live at 1286161st Lane, so I'm about three streets away from where the proposed church is. First, I want to say thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. First and foremost, postponing the subdivision variance meeting again would only prolong the uncertainty that surrounds the proposed project. Our community members have been eagerly waiting to voice our opinions, concerns, and suggestions regarding the development in question. By deterring this meeting, or deferring this meeting, we deny them the opportunity to actively participate in shaping the future of our neighborhood. The meeting represents a democratic platform for dialogue and collaboration, enabling us to collectively decide on matters that affect us all. Furthermore, the postponement of the meeting sends a message of indifference and neglect towards the concerns of our community. We must acknowledge the efforts made by residents who have prepared extensively to present their arguments and seek a fair resolution. By honoring those committed and dedicated, we demonstrate respect for their time, energy, and contributions. Lastly, we must remember that time is a valuable resource. By repeatedly postponing the subdivision variance, we squander the opportunity to move forward and find resolution. Postponements create a domino effect impacting the future decisions, schedules, and ultimately the overall development of our community. We owe it to ourselves and future generations to make timely, informed decisions that contribute to the betterment of our community. In conclusion, let us recognize the importance of the subdivision variance meeting and refrain from postponing it for a second time. By doing so, we show commitment to our community that values the voices of its residents. Together, we can ensure that this meeting serves its intended purpose and leads us towards a brighter future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I need Ralph Villarreal and Michael Toomey.
Good morning, I'm Ralph Villarreal. I live at 1298766th Street North, right behind where this outfit is going to be, the church. My question is, why postponing? I have horses. This is a private community. This is a community that we need to make a decision now, not drag it and drag it and drag it. Where or when are we going to have a peace of mind to be able to ride our horses? There is, there is right at the corner where this church is supposed to be going on, there is a bus stop. We have five buses that stop now. We have a bus stop, we have a school bus stop with four-stop signs, then we're going to have school guards, then we're going to have signs to slow down at 20 miles an hour, and then we're going to have all this traffic going on and off. So during the week, we're going to, during the week, we're going to have traffic jams, and on the weekend, we're not going to have peace of mind. So postponing and postponing and postponing is like playing with your mind, playing with our peace of mind, playing with our environment, playing with the, you know, I mean, they don't have a representation, I am sorry. We don't have a representation. They have the money to pay attorneys and to pay lobbyists and to pay everybody. Church is a business. Now we have a church, next time we're going to have a gas station on the other side. Okay? And that's how it starts. Now, we don't have the money to pay for attorneys, to pray for our representation. We have only us, a neighborhood, neighbors that we come together to help keep our peace of mind that we've been having for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Good morning, my name is Michael Toomey. I live at 12945 Tangerine Boulevard, the property directly adjacent to the east of this property that we're here for. Basically, I would be reiterating what has already been said as far as this is a burden to the citizens of the community that have showed up today. This is the second postponement. And more to the point is, I don't understand how the man at the center of this variance, the pastor of this church, the person in charge of this church, wants to stand before you and tell you he has no clue about what's going on. And therefore, how should we allow a guy that is this ill-prepared to be given another variance? That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Carol King and Stacy Flugie. Sorry if I messed that up.
Good morning, my name is Carol King. I live at 1115963rd Lane North, which is about, maybe about 2, 3 miles east of where this, where this church is planning to, is requesting to build. And my main concern is how it's going to impact the traffic at the intersection of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Tangerine, which is already an extremely busy intersection. There's been numerous accidents there. I know of at least one fatality there. And so having a church bringing traffic to that intersection, having any enterprise that's going to bring more traffic to that intersection, where cars are going to be waiting to turn left to go to that enterprise, is just going to significantly impact at least 200 households or more that have to cross that intersection. So if the decision is made now, or 30 days from now, or 60 days from now, it's not going to affect that, but any enterprise put out there in this residential area, especially affecting the intersection of Tangerine Boulevard and Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, is going to have an extremely negative impact on a wide-reaching area of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stacy Flugie. I live at 12946...
I live at 1294666 Street North. I am diagonally adjacent to the proposed property. The subdivision variance item should go forth today as planned and not be allowed yet another postponement. Those of us affected by this item have taken time off work, hired childcare, canceled appointments, and rearranged our schedules in order to be here today. The requested postponement is a stalling tactic by the church in hopes that the neighbors will lose interest or be unable to attend the meeting next month. This postponement request must not be approved and the item should be discussed as planned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bob Morgan and Lauren Minley.
Good morning. Bob Morgan, Acres Landowners Association President, 1378467th Street North. I would like to reiterate that we do not approve the postponement of this. We need to get this taken care of. We're finding out about these changes that are going on on social media and I'd like to find out who I need to talk to about getting this, these notifications prior to these meetings being held so we can at least discuss it. We didn't hear anything from the property owner that this was going to happen. And this is a requirement for them, for the county, at least to let the Acres Landowners Association know when these DRO changes and zoning changes take place. And this, again, this was only about a month ago I first heard of this. And please do not delay this. It's ridiculous what they're trying to do there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Mincy. I live at 13742 Tangerine Boulevard, just a little ways down the street. And I'm begging you not to postpone. As you can already hear, our children in the background, the first meeting, we had childcare. I have so many local moms who would like to be here, but unfortunately, they're not going to continue to get childcare if it's going to be postponed over and over again. This is not helpful to our community to, we need to be able to make a decision on this. This is a very local community. We all have children. We all have families. All of my neighbors were planning to come until they heard it's going to be postponed and they're not going to take a day off of work again to do this. So I am begging you to stop this. Tell us what we need to do to keep our community as safe and quiet as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman? I'm sorry, did you want to go first, Mike?
That's fine, sure.
Okay.
Last month, the applicant asked for a postponement and they had the request in early enough, so it was on the, it was on the ad delete. So it was a by right postponement. But this time, the applicant's agent didn't submit or talk to Scott until yesterday. And so that's why there had, they had to come here today and ask for a postponement. But they already had one.
And, but the agent is not here nor is the project manager nor is anyone from the applicant to provide any kind of presentation in reference to a request for a postponement?
Correct. And nothing's changed over the past 30 days with regards to the staff report or staff analysis or discussion.
Understand and looking at it, it doesn't appear that the staff analysis or staff report is going to change in any material form or fashion and that would continue to be recommended for denial on, across all parts of the area. Okay. And so moving on, the, no one called today to say, hey, we have an exigent circumstance. We were in a car accident. There was, it was just, we just need a postponement.
So yesterday, Scott did receive a call from Mr. Hackett requesting the postponement. And he also spoke with the pastor who explained that his agent couldn't be here today because of a medical issue. That was yesterday, mid-morning or so.
That was just, hey, can we postpone it?
They, they said that they were going to come here and request a postponement.
But they, but they did not. The agent is not here.
The agent is not here.
I'm, I'm, I'm down on a postponement. I'd say hear it. Staff, the staff recommendation is not going to change. The, the material facts of this are not going to change.
So you're, you're saying you're not in favor of postponement?
No, I say hear it.
I concur with, with Commissioner Kelly. I do not believe that we should be granting a postponement. They did it last month and there's no reason to move it forward. The community has spoken. The community is here and they're begging us to listen. And I think that it's in our duty to listen to them and hear this case out the way that it stands today because as far as I understand from staff, nothing's going to change.
Can I, can I address the commission, please?
One moment, please. Scott?
I was actually going to ask, there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between what the agent may have relayed to staff yesterday and what the pastor is saying today. You could clarify the reason why the agent is unable to be here today?
He told me yesterday that he has a procedure to undertake, some type of biopsy.
We don't need to know the details. It's a medical reason, okay. And he did not mention that when he spoke with staff?
So he spoke with Scott and all I received from Scott was that, Scott Cantor, was that he was not able to be here today and that he would be requesting the.
And did he submit anything in writing or it was just a verbal communication? Okay.
Yeah, we had anticipated that he would be here this morning.
I anticipated as well. And also, the last hearing that was postponed by Mr. James, it was postponed because we were under the impression that this was, go ahead, we, we, we were under total impression that this was going to move forward, that everything was in place. We paid the fees, we paid application fees, we had surveys done, we had approval, we had sufficiency. And I believe a week or so before the hearing, the final hearing, we were told that this is going to be removed without prejudice. And, and we're trying to find out why. Why did we go from being sufficient, go from being approved with this church after spending so much money to now one person deciding that it's not moving, we're not moving forward? And we wanted the opportunity to sit down with that individual, to schedule a meeting, to find out why was this now being rejected after we were told it was accepted?
If I may, through the chair.
Sure.
This is a variance and there is no agent representing and speaking on this item before you. But a variance is when an applicant does not meet the standards of the code. And the fact that we process requests and we find an application sufficient for processing doesn't mean that staff will recommend approval. It doesn't mean that this commission will approve something. It's, it's a variance application. And I know the speaker is not familiar with planning, zoning, building type of applications, but we, we accept applications for processing all the time. They need the minimum sufficiency items for surveys and traffic studies and all that stuff. But it doesn't, it's never, a sufficient application is never guarantee that, in particular a variance, which are very hard standards to meet, to demonstrate that why you can't abide by the code that everyone else in the street essentially has to abide by. It's a residential street, it's a residential property, everything probably within that graphic unless it's agriculture or someone might have a home business is, is more than likely a home because that's what the rules are set for and this doesn't meet the rules for the local commercial street in the subdivision code and that's why the variance is here.
Yeah, well said.
Wasn't it explained to us?
Yeah.
No one sat down and held a meeting with us to tell us why this was going on. I'm looking at a place of worship here and it explains what qualifies for a place of worship. And we met those qualifications. They said if it's on this street now, if it's below 5,000 square footage, we're able now to bypass the, not bypass the variance, but there's ways around it. Again, I can't speak because I'm not an attorney. But I need the opportunity because now if you reject this, the church has lost $500,000. This gentleman came up here and said that I'm not, I shouldn't be representing the church and I shouldn't be speaking to you. He can't speak to my character. He can't speak to who I am. The church is a blessing to the community. It brings jobs, it brings opportunity, it saves lives. I had a meeting with some of the folks and they were concerned about all the trees on the property. It's our property. I mean, we can remove trees if we decide to.
Yeah.
But I need the opportunity to meet with staff to find out why did they tell us we can do this and now at the fifth hour, 11th hour, tell us that we can't.
Yeah, and I, I understand where you're coming from. What staff had just mentioned, and I know you don't understand what the, the rules and regulations are that we look at. There are seven criteria that you have to meet to try to, to get this petition passed. And you have to meet all seven. And through the, the packet, the information that we have read, those are going to be seven items that you need to meet.
We need the opportunity.
And I, personally, and I'm speaking for myself, even if you come back and you have a representation, I just don't see you meeting any of those criteria. And you got to meet all of them.
Ms. Olive, did you have a, have a statement?
I did. I wanted to clarify because Scott Stone did ask about if we got any communication and we did get an email yesterday morning from Mr. Hackett requesting the postponement. And, but he didn't mention anything personal, but we did get.
That's, that's fine. I actually wanted to know because I, I wasn't sure, Pastor, I'm sure you are advocating on behalf of your church, but legally, I didn't know if you had provided evidence that you're authorized to act on behalf of the, the church organization?
Yesterday, he told me that I could.
Okay. But it sounds like we, we got an official request in writing?
We got an email that he was requesting that there would be a postponement requested.
Okay.
For procedures, they have to come, you know, they miss the by right, which means they have to come here and ask for a postponement.
And I'll, I'll read that actually from, from, directly from the code. If the postponement is requested less than nine calendar days prior to the date of the scheduled hearing, the request for postponement shall be presented at the hearing and at the discretion of the ZC or BC, ZC in this case. And I, I will say you obviously have staff's analysis and recommendation and competent substantial evidence on behalf of, of their position. And it is now, up to your determination as to whether you believe that postponing it to allow the agent time to come would reveal information that would give you enough comfort finding substantial competent evidence to find that all of the criteria are met as the chair has kind of alluded to. So that's, that's, that's part of the consideration here. But the, the code does say that it is at the discretion of the zoning commission.
Great. Thanks for that, that explanation. I, I do want to let the, the public know that we see all of your comments, whether you're for the project or against the project, we all have that information before that meeting. So your voices are heard so that even if this is postponed, your voices have already been heard. So I just want you to know that. So we hear it. No, no.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to deny the postponement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. And I'll give you the reason is I think the gentleman has the right, has earned the right to at least express their opinion and come forward and speak on what they're after. So.
Thank you, sir.
I'm voting for their rights.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Motion to postpone has been denied.
Chairman, I think based on.
Can they re-initiate the application?
So we're not get, we're not going to.
I'm sorry, sir. Hang on, hang on one second.
Can they, sorry, can you recuse that?
Can they re-initiate the application?
Well, that depends on the outcome of the hearing right now because now you will be hearing the substantive arguments and merits of the case. And if your determination is approval, obviously that won't matter. If it's denial, then you would have to decide denial with or without prejudice. And without, with prejudice.
One year.
One year, if it's not materially different than what was presented to you before.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kern?
I, I think we, we know, you know, where staff is. I think we know what the code is. If it's okay with the board, I'm ready to move forward with the motion.
Well, I think, I think we need to offer the applicant, the pastor, an opportunity to make his case.
I need the opportunity to make mine. And I thank you, sir, for your kind words. And I think even those that oppose in the church, I appreciate this opportunity to be here to present a case. Again, it's not that I'm not prepared. I'm not versed in this. I hired folks to do this. I hired an attorney to do this. I hired an agent to do this. We paid thousands of dollars. I didn't get the opportunity to speak with the director. We tried to do that. I had a lawyer to do that. And he recused himself because in the, I called these neighbors, I called them up, I invited them to the home and I sat with them to come to some type of conclusion where we can resolve this issue. The gentleman that spoke to my character, he came into our home, into the church, and he cursed, cursed me and walked out and then came again. I'm not here to interfere with anyone's life. Not here to interfere. Listen, this property was given to us.
Hey, 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 come on, come on. We're not going to have that here.
All comments, all comments should be directed towards the chair and the commissioners.
All we're asking for is the opportunity to present our case, to have an attorney sit down with who is involved in making the decision after we were told that this can move forward. That's all we're asking for. That's all we're asking for.
So, so right now is the time for you to make your case?
Say again, sir?
Right now is the time for you to make your case, sir. Tell us why we should move forward with either approving or denying the, the request in front of us.
The reason I, I believe we should move forward, and I won't speak of just the blessings that the church brings to the community. Again, some of the neighbors are concerned about the beauty of the property, the parking spaces. It's a small, a small church and we, we have about 100, 150 members. After COVID, everything was difficult, trying to move forward, losing members, moving, so on and so forth. We found this property and believe it was a blessing, a blessing from God. And we, we pursued it. The family accepted our bid and we moved forward with it. And now speaking from this standpoint here, what is frustrating is that I hired someone to, to do this job, to be standing here representing me. I have no control over his medical issues. I have no control over what goes on with his day-to-day life. He was on vacation last week when I called. I called to try to get him to, to submit this postponement because I knew we didn't have the right representation, we didn't have the, the right attorneys because Mr. Perry had to recuse himself. And he was on vacation, couldn't talk, couldn't do anything. He returned Sunday. I waited for a call Monday, no call, so I called him Tuesday to ask what's going on. Wednesday is when I find out that we had to be here. I'm not aware of the time and the laws. I was told that, you know, we can cancel the meeting or postpone to get things in order. He called Mr. Cantor evidently he didn't know either. If he did, I, I, I'm not sure what, what, what went, went on. But I called Mr. Cantor myself to ask him what's going on. How can we get around this, this, this issue? Because I'm just finding out that we're not able to, to postpone a meeting. I have to show up and I cannot show up without a lawyer. I cannot show up without an agent. The agent is telling me he cannot make it as a doctor's appointment. So he said, well, you can show up and make your case. He said, we, we'll give you the opportunity. And I answered him. I said, are you going to oppose the, the objection, not the objection, but the, the postponement? And he said, I really can't speak to that. But I said, I need to know. If I'm coming here to defend the church and to, to make sure that we can postpone this, I need to know the process. He told me, just show up, we will schedule a meeting, we will see what we can do, do as far as sitting down with the director, sitting down with staff. I, I, I don't even, I don't even have a staff report. I'm finding out that the staff report was sent out yesterday. I, I don't know when, he received it yesterday. That's what he told me, my agent. So if you receive a staff report yesterday saying that this is now being rejected with prejudice and I'm not aware of it, what do I do when I show up here on the sixth? What's my defense when I show up here on the sixth? When I'm finding out this information at the 11th hour? So I need an opportunity to sit down with staff, find out how did they get to this decision, what rules that, that I'm not abiding by because I, I felt like we did everything possible, every step of the way. The fines, the, the fees we paid, the, every request that was made by, by the county, we made those. I did what I was supposed to do, hoping that the agent, the attorneys would do what they were supposed to do. Again, here I am. Again, here I am. I just need answers. The church is out of all this money. How do we recoup this? Yeah, I understand. When you purchase your place, sir...
Please stop comments from the audience, please.
Well, that's what I've been dealing with from the time, you know, I purchased the property. And I understand. But either way, the property belongs to the church. Either way, we're going to be neighbors. It belongs to the church.
Address to us, too, as well.
It belongs to the church. I'm not here to fight, to argue, to throw anyone on the bus. I'm representing this church because I'm called to minister from this church, and this property was given to us. And we did everything we were supposed to.
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Ma'am, when was the staff report sent out to the applicant's attorney and representative?
The, Scott shared with the agent over a month ago that this was going to get a recommendation of denial, which is why he asked for a postponement last month. So they've known for a minimum of six weeks. And then this packet was published a week ago. Well, Wednesday of last month. Usually, it's up and running for sure a week ago Thursday morning. So this went out on schedule. And if the applicant has an issue with his agent, we hear that all the time, and that is beyond the control of this board or staff. So we can't be responsible for communication between any applicant and their agent.
So just to be absolutely crystal clear, the applicant, agent, attorney received the notice?
They knew five to six weeks ago that they were going to get a recommendation of denial, and they got this published report finding the application inconsistent with the standards a week ago, the published version of the report.
Okay, so the communication between the owner of the property and the agent, that's incumbent upon them. That is not incumbent upon the staff to double-check with a owner of a property who has submitted an application through an agent or an attorney. It's not staff's responsibility to minder an applicant, representative, agent, or attorney. And I appreciate your diligence in having that information available to us to make a fair and informed decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in relation to making a case for the variance? Not what the postponement, the case is now about the variance?
Well, again, I spoke to Scott yesterday is when I found out about the variance, that it was denied with prejudice.
All we have to go on are the facts, and there's seven facts that we have to meet. And you have to make your case for why those seven facts, whether it's you, the applicant, whoever, the attorney, that's what we need to hear. Yes?
Actually, I would like, I think it would be beneficial to us and for the pastor, if he would answer the conditions that you feel, the reason why you should get a variance. One, the special conditions and circumstances that are particular to this parcel of land, building, or structure that are not applicable to other parcels of land, structures, or buildings in the same district. So what is so unique that the church can come in and build a church versus a house like everybody else? What's unique about?
Every community that I go through, there's a church. That's where the church is supposed to be, in the community. That's where we make...
But what's different about this parcel of land versus where...
The location, again, the location of the property, the size of the property.
It doesn't meet code. So why would the church be an exception?
As far as the exception, it's a nonprofit organization. It's an organization that's going to help the community.
Okay.
It's going to be beneficial to the community.
Special circumstances and conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. The property currently has the required 80 feet minimum width to accommodate the proposed church. However, the requirement to be located on a local commercial street classification requires the applicant to request the subdivision variance. So what has changed that, can you explain?
No, I really can't explain. I'm going by what I'm looking at here that was sent to me as far as place of worship.
Okay, and I just don't see that there's... Granted, the variance would be consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policy of the plan in this code. There are additional non-residential uses which were previously approved in the area, all of which remain consistent with the purposes, goals, objects, et cetera, with the plan and the ULDC. Granting the variance would be consistent with the surrounding areas. So why, if there's nothing else, why would this be an exception? You know, if the guy next door wants to sell his house and wants to put it in a shopping center, why shouldn't he? It's not in the code. So why would this church, why should the church be given a variance versus a guy who wants to sell to a shopping center or Amazon warehouse?
I understand what you're saying. Again, I'm not versed with the laws and those rules. What I'm saying is, there are churches in the surrounding areas. We figured that we would be able to place this church there in that location as well. We're just finding out about the variance.
Well, that's not true, because, I mean, this was on the agenda for last month, staff report. I know I got mine on Friday. I know it was on the website on Friday. At least, well, that's when I looked on Friday. So it could have been there before. So to say that, you know, and I'm sorry that...
I was told by the agent that this weekend place takes care...
But you as an owner have some responsibility overseeing your agent. And Marty Perry just suddenly realized he had a conflict?
Yes.
When?
He, I believe it was right after the hearing or before the decision was made to oppose the church.
When? I mean, you know, was that a week ago?
I believe it, I believe it.
Month ago?
It was last month.
Okay.
And Marty recused himself because he is a part of Indian Trail. Indian Trail had nothing to do with the approval until, I think we found this out three weeks ago, that they would be involved. And after he realized that, because he tried to schedule a meeting, from my understanding, with Ms. Lisi, and...
And how long did you have him retained as an attorney, before he realized he had a conflict?
He spoke to James for about a week, going back and forth, trying to schedule the meeting. And after he realized that Indian Trail would be involved, because, like I said, I made calls to a lot of the neighbors, and some of the neighbors told me that, hey, one of the neighbors said that their wife is on the Board of Director with Indian Trail. And when they said it, I said, we're going to have a problem.
So you had a retainer agreement with Marty Perry?
No, he just represented the church until he realized that he cannot...
Okay.
Yeah. So after that, I was referred, I was referred another lawyer, Mr. Crane. And Crane told me he couldn't take the case because it's a last-minute thing. And he referred me to another attorney that said he would call us back yesterday, and we have not heard back from them as yet. That's why we needed an opportunity to sit down with counsel and sit down with staff.
Mr. Chair, if it may be helpful, the applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine and rebut after public comment, anyway. So if it would be helpful for staff to do their presentation, go through their criteria, and that way it might give some more context.
Yeah. Okay.
Great recommendation.
Staff, your presentation?
Sorry.
Cross-examination, I guess, at this point.
Olive Bailey, again, with Land Development. So I'll sort of breeze through this, the site's located there in the acreage. It is a 2.7-acre parcel with agricultural residential zoning and a rural residential 2.5-foo. The site currently has one single-family residence on it, and their proposed use is a place of worship, just under 5,000 square feet. So their variance request is for Article 11, specifically 11E to A2, which is the minimum legal access. And that is to allow for them to be allowed access from an 80-foot easement. Our code says that anything that's not residential, we consider commercial. And so commercial access is required from an 80-foot right-of-way tract or private street tract. And currently, that 80-foot easement is maintained by Indian Trail Improvement District. And so the requirement that they would need is an 80-foot right-of-way with 24 feet of So as you all, as we've been discussing, we, our analysis is based on Article 2, Section 2B7E of the ULDC. And I'm not going to go through each one of them unless you want me to, but through our analysis of the criteria, it's upon us to determine that they meet all the seven criteria. And through our analysis, we found that they didn't meet any of the seven criteria. So we received 31 contacts from the public prior to the time of publication, and all were in opposition. We did meet with Indian Trail Improvement District, as they do maintain these roads and the drainage out in that area. And they're also, they voiced their opposition. They're concerned with the increased traffic to that road, and they expressed other issues regarding drainage as well. So because they have failed to meet the seven criteria of Article 2, B7E, our staff is recommending denial of the subdivision variance.
Mr. Chair, normally, these quick presentations are fine, especially when it's in the staff report already. But I think in this case, given the context, it might be helpful to go through each of the criteria.
So what I have on the screen, each of the criteria, I don't have the applicant's, but I do have ours, so our response. So A, special conditions and circumstances exist that are peculiar to this parcel of land, building, or structure that are not applicable to other parcels of land, structures, or buildings in the same district. So there are no special existing, special conditions or circumstances that are peculiar to this property that aren't applicable to the other parcels. The acreage does consist of thousands of lots to access roadways and drainage easements, which is no different than this property. B, special circumstances and conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. This property was purchased as a single-family residential house and can continue to function as such from that 80-foot easement. The proposed change of use is what's necessitating the variance request, and so we consider this request self-created, the special circumstance self-created. C, granting the variance shall not confer upon the applicant any special privilege denied by the comprehensive plan in this code to other parcels of land, building, or structures in the same zoning district. This parcel will not be developed in a manner that's consistent with the existing zoning and land use regulations and will not be consistent with other properties on the same street. There are no other properties in this neighborhood and on this street that are developed as a place of worship. D, literal interpretation and enforcement of the terms and provisions of the ULDC would deprive the petitioner of rights commonly enjoyed by other parcels of land in the same zoning district and would work an unnecessary and undue hardship. Literal interpretation of the code would not deprive the petitioner of rights commonly enjoyed by other parcels of land in this same zoning district and would not result in an unnecessary and undue hardship. The property owner, again, purchased this property as a single-family residential house and can continue to use the property as purchased. E, granting the variance is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the parcel of land, building, or structure. This proposed use has location criteria, as described in Article 4, that must be met, and approving this variance will not negate the need for the property to meet the Article 4 location criteria. F, granting the variance will be consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan in this code. Granting this variance would not allow the site to be developed otherwise in accordance with the ULDC provisions. And G, granting the variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Granting of this variance will not be injurious to the area involved nor detrimental to the public welfare. However, the property will not be developed consistently with the development patterns of the surrounding uses, as the surrounding area is limited to single-family residences.
Okay, thank you. I do want to make note that all the commissioners have received the applicant's rebuttal or reasons for acceptance of these variances, and it's in all of our package from H&amp;L Consultants. So there is a written rebuttal. I'm sure everyone has read that. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that we have received the applicant's reasoning for why these criteria should be, have been met. Has everybody read those?
Yes.
Yep. So I just want to make that part of the record, that we have received information on why the criteria should be accepted. We've already heard from the public, too. We need to hear from them again.
Yes, technically, because the first one was just about the postponement, and now this is the actual public hearing portion.
Right. Okay.
Of course, they are more than welcome to waive their time.
Yeah.
So at this time, I need to call back the people that have already...
The A, yep.
Yep, all right. So I'm going to call back the folks that have already come up. This time, you can speak with regard to the actually application, not the postponement. Again, as I call you up, please go to either podium, state your name and address for the record. If you have already spoke to your desire and you'd rather pass, then you can do that as well. So I'm going to start with Bob Morgan and Lauren Minsley.
Good morning again. Bob Morgan, Acreage Landowners Association, 1378467 St. North. I'd like to thank you for listening and not postponing this. And I just would like to say that this is going to be a problem if this is approved, which, from the denials, I hope this continues. The intersection where this is located is privately owned, maintained by ITID. One of the roads is a dirt road, and it is also a designated horse trail. Having traffic on there on a Sunday would be just ridiculous and would put a hazard to our residents in that area, especially with the horse owners and people that ride their bikes and other vehicles. And that's all I'll say there on those roads. We'd just like to ask that you deny this request, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Lauren Minsley, 13742 Tangerine Boulevard. Like I said, we're right down the street from this church, and we have two small children. All of our friends have children. We have a gravel road, so we take this Tangerine Boulevard as where we ride our bikes. We ride it down to the church, down to the park at the end of the street. Everyone uses this as a walking trail. And this church isn't just asking for Sundays. If you look, there are multiple days where they have plans to worship. We love church. We go to church. Our church is 17 minutes away. We are not saying no to our church. We are asking you not to allow a business where we live, where we're trying to raise our children. Right next door on 130th is where every single child I know goes fishing, and it is directly outside of where this proposed building is going to be. So for us, it's a safety hazard. The amount of people, we don't know 100, 150 people driving on these roads, and I just ask you to deny for the safety of our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carol King and Stacy, I did it again, I'm sorry, Stacy Fluege.
Pass.
Okay.
That's from...
Carol, that's Carol King, yep.
Hi, my name is Stacy Fluege. I live at 1294666 St. North. Is that buzzing? I'm diagonally adjacent to the property in question. You're going to hear from other people about the loss of privacy, effect on home values, fears about noise and safety, items which will certainly affect me as well. It's disturbing that the initial application shows more thought about the effects on a few native trees than it does to the effects on the immediate neighbors. The truth is that we will all suffer if this is approved. The truth is that we will all suffer if this is approved, but since those concerns are likely to be well-covered by others, I'd like to speak of some of the other issues that I've found. Firstly, let's discuss the effects of the increased traffic on both 130th and on Tangerine. 130th is a dirt road that requires grading. Indian Trail already does not have the resources nor the manpower to grade it as often as required, the results of which are big swampy mess after every rainfall with puddles that don't dry up for days or weeks. The biggest mud area directly on the fence, is directly on the fence line of the proposed property, a problem that's persisted for years, and no amount of fill or grading has been able to remedy. The additional influx of cars on this road will only exacerbate the problem, and the entity causing the problem will not even be required to pay taxes to help alleviate it. In addition, 130th is a designated equestrian trail, as Bob had mentioned. Those of us who live out here are cognizant of the care that must be taken when approaching a horse and rider. While the pastor of the church has claimed his patrons are local, they're not from the immediate area, as evidenced by the number of signatures we were able to obtain in opposition. So it will be mostly non-ac acreage residents who will have no such understanding of how to deal with the horses in the, in the roads that we have out by us. This puts every equestrian who uses the road at risk and defeats the purpose of a designated trail. Unlike the placement of the main entities for other churches, I'm sorry, main entries for other churches in the area, the proposed entrance will not be on a county road, instead it will be on Tangerine Boulevard, a small local road that has been host to many accidents over the years at nearly every intersection. Some of those accidents have sadly been fatal, and have affected many of us in this room. Tangerine cannot support more traffic, especially that of non-residents who have no ties or understanding to the neighborhood or concern for the dangers of this road. A small local road with a history of terrible accidents is no place to add more traffic. Another concern that I'd like to discuss is drainage. After the most recent storm, yards all around the proposed property were underwater, we do have photos of that if you would like to see. Removing nearly every tree and creating 67 parking spaces will only add to that, being that we, along with the proposed property, only have wells and septic systems, this is a dangerous thing. Oil, gas, and fluids from cars will run into neighboring properties, one of which has their wellhead only 15 feet from the fence.
Thank you. Yep, you're out of time, thank you. Next, if I could have Michael Toomey and Ralph Villarreal.
My name's Michael Toomey, I live at 12945 Tangerine Boulevard. As I had previously stated, I am directly the property east of this proposed variance property. I have photographs that I, somebody said I could submit to the clerk, is that possible?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed.
Okay, so I'm here to address the health and safety concerns of myself and my family. Regarding Pastor Lionel, his home is Lionel, yes, I was the person in question that he brought up. I was not questioning his integrity, obviously, I was questioning his preparedness. Regarding the safety and, and health of my, of my family, as was stated by Stacy, my wellhead is less than 13 feet from the property line. At this moment, as I standard speak to you, his property and my property are underwater, upwards of two feet. The water table has been saturated, and I'm sure you all know the acreage in Loxahatchee suffer this, and it ebbs and flows a lot with water flow through the canals. So obviously, potential contamination of my wellhead due to the 67 parking spaces being against my property line. When he talks about him potentially having been approved, I went to this meeting, this Hackett Enterprises said that they had met county requirements, minimal county requirements in that there was a 13, all they needed for line of sight, relief from my property was a 13-foot setback to put these 67 parking spaces, and to plant, I believe, 10 slash pines, and that would satisfy the county. This is what his firm said, the people are representing him. I don't know how that actually applies, as I said, regardless, the property runs off into my property because his property is elevated, my property is the lowest property actually amongst the four, and the people around me, it all migrates onto my land, it runs into my pond. So again, the contamination of the wellhead is most important. Secondly, he brings up the fact, I believe in this variance, that there will be 201 people, specifically 201 people, that will be attending his services. They'll be using a residential septic tank that is not capable of handling that, and therefore, the NO3 nitrates, which are essentially ammonia, will be leaching into the ground, and they have also been tied to potential cancers, birth defects, and whatever.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ralph Villarreal, I live at 1298766 Street North, West Palm Beach, Florida, right behind this proposed property. As the pastor says, he said that they have 150 members of the church, 150 members of the church, you go three miles up from the proposed church, two miles east, three miles, in every direction, we don't have 150 houses. Now, where are they going to accommodate 150 members on 67 parking spaces? Every property is going to be a parking lot. The gentleman that was just speaking to you is going to be a parking lot, I got, all of those, all of that street is going to be parking lots on each side. Where are you going to place 150 members, since in the immediate area, three miles each way, we don't have 150 homes? Rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rachel Donath and Eric Baxter, please.
Again, thank you for not postponing. The subdivision variance is important matter that directly affects the peace and tranquility of our community. If you know the acreage, you know we all have lots, that, that the whole reason we moved out to the acreage was to have the peace and tranquility. The proposal to allow a church to utilize not just a residential property, a residential house, is going to affect the community that we're raising our kids in. Concerns regarding potential noise and disturbance it may bring, it's crucial that we carefully consider these factors before making a decision. Our residential areas are designed to provide serene and quiet environment where families and individuals can find solace and respite from the chaos of the outside world. Allowing a church to operate in such a setting raises valid concerns about the potential noise levels that may disrupt the peace we hold dear. Church services often involve amplified sound systems, including music, preaching, and congregational activities that can reverberate through the community, penetrating the walls of the houses next door, and disrupting our daily lives. Furthermore, it's important to acknowledge the potential impact on the surrounding community during times of worship. We have horses that ride by, if they're not accustomed to the noise level, it may spook them very easily. This not only poses an inconvenience, but can also disrupt the safety and harmony we have come to expect within our community. Moreover, we consider the potential disruption to our established routines and activities. Our residential areas are where we seek solace, rest, and the ability to engage in activities that contribute to our physical and mental well-being. The noise generated by a nearby church can hinder our ability to concentrate, work, study, or simply enjoy peaceful moments. It is vital that we safeguard that right to a peaceful living environment for all of our community. I urge you all to reflect on these concerns before making any decisions. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning again. Thank you for extending our, our thing now. I have, I have signed petitions that I would like to hand in to the clerk, and I also have a power of attorney to hand in a letter from my neighbor that was unable, she had previous vacation plans and the date was changed, so she couldn't change her date.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it short since I had a big, long thing here, but basically, one thing is privacy. I feel that it would be really unjust for the three neighbors that are in contact with that, that property, their backyards and side yards adjacent to that property, if they were to remove the trees and put in parking. You know, it's one thing to have a neighbor that you know, and have their family there, and you communicate with them, to have them wave over the fence and say good morning or whatever, but it's totally another thing to have upwards of 200 people that you don't even know pulling into the yard and, and looking over the fence and, you know, not even knowing, you know, who or what they're, you know, they're doing, other than going to the church. I don't feel that that would be fair for them. As well, I am a registered beekeeper, I am the president of Palm Beach County Beekeepers, and I am also a state member of the FSBA. They have a best management practice for keeping bees. One of the, one of the stipulations are, if I'm to start up an apiary, I am not allowed to have an apiary within 150 feet of a known gathering location, such as a school, a church, a playground, these type of areas that are public access, I am not allowed, or, you know, in that, in best management practices. Their front gate to my front gate are directly, is within 90 feet of my front gate, and my apiary has been established for 15 years, so I would be grandfathered in as far as the state is concerned, but, you know, I have bees, and all my neighbors know, and they come, they buy honey, they, you know, they know about the bees, and I have not had any issues in the 15 years that I've been registered beekeeper. So my, my thoughts are, what happens if some of the parishioners or the churchgoers come, you know, go to the church, and God forbid they get stung out, out in the back somewhere, and then, and, you know, who's going to be liable? Is it going to come back on me, or would the church be liable, because they've started this group gathering afterwards, knowing that I'm a beekeeper and have an active apiary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, quick, quick procedural matter, the letter that was submitted by the person who's not currently here can be submitted as part of the record, but it can't be considered as competent substantial evidence towards your decision.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, did they fill out a card?
They're still in the show.
Okay, any cross-examination?
Yeah, at this point, Pastor, if there's anything you'd like to say in rebut, or...
Okay, having none. Staff, cross-examination? Questions of staff?
Nope.
Okay, comments from the board?
No comments.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution denying with prejudice, item 6A.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kern.
For discussion, is it possible to persuade you to deny it without prejudice?
Staff's opinion is not going to change in the next 30 days, it didn't change from the last 30 days where the postponement was granted.
Well, it just denies him for a year is all it does, correct?
It does, it gives, it gives the church time to put things together in order, it gives them time to establish the proper legal counsel, the proper development counsel, and people in place to do their...
Years, a long time, just asking for his sake.
And I can give you the direct language from the code. When an application is denied with prejudice, an application for a development order for all or part of the same land shall not be considered for a period of one year after the date of denial. Denial with prejudice prohibits the filing of a successive application which is not materially different, as defined in this section, for one calendar year.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that, that question mark, so, yeah, I think it's important. Okay, so we have, any further discussion? We got a motion from Commissioner Kern, second one from Commissioner Scarborough. Any further discussion? Good, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, motion passed for denial on the variance. Moving along, next item's seven, which is DeCosta-Horn-Marshall Road Lot Split.
Yes, the proposed application is a, another subdivision variance requesting modification for access on an existing 30-foot roadway with no sidewalks, and staff is recommending denial without prejudice, and we can turn it over to the applicant for a presentation, and then staff.
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning commission, good morning. Hopefully, this will be a little more straightforward than your last one, now that I have the little clicker here. My name is Richard Carlson, Chip Carlson, representing Jamie DeCosta and Kevin Horn on the acquisition and proposed splitting of a lot into two lots. Which one do I push? There we go. This property is located in the Pioneer Road Community, west of Jog, south of Southern, just north of Dillman Road, and just west of Cleary Road. Cleary is the road that's the north-south road on the far right of that screen. Property is 4.63 acres in size, and even though it's just a single split to create a second lot for a second home on the property, it's a development, just like any other development, it requires minimum access. So before you today is a variance request for the right-of-way width and for the lane width of the travel surface. So this is a rural subdivision that is coming through, the Article 11 of the subdivision regulations provide for rural subdivisions for well and septic tank, and for roads that are not paved, what the code calls roads without a wearing surface. I call it a shellrock road, but anyway. Marshall Road is the means of access to the property, and it consists of an east-west component and a north-south component, both of which do not meet the rural subdivision standards. Because it's a unpaved road, it requires a 60-foot right-of-way, even though it's no sidewalks, and it would normally be 32 feet for serving four properties, or 40 feet to serve the 17 lots that are provided access by Marshall Road. Now, I don't know what I'm doing here. There we go. Before I get into all the technical information that you have to consider, I wanted to talk to you about the Pioneer Road Community. Some of you remember this from presentations over the years for development efforts to bring in production home-building projects, single lot, single, I'm sorry, zero lot-line homes, or single-family detached homes on small parcels. As a result of those efforts, the community has gotten together over the years, and has achieved a special status in the comprehensive plan, which is intended to protect the rural character of this area. And if you have ever driven the Pioneer Road Community, you will understand the nature of it. It is truly unique in the urban suburban tier. It is one of seven rural enclaves that the comprehensive plan recognizes, should be afforded protection against typical production home-building development, and this one is one that has actually achieved an overlay, which is, again, protected and intended to protect the rural character. If you turn down Pioneer Road from Jog Road going west, you drive back 50 to 70 years in time. It's a truly unique community. Part of the protection is to try to afford... Part of the protection is to try to afford some development options in here that allow for the organic evolution of the community, the organic development of the community, and that is exactly what is occurring on Jamie and Kevin's property. The code provides that if it is a minimum one-acre lot to be created, it does not have to go through zoning processes if it's an AR district zoned land, and so, again, this is the vision that's been established in the community for that area. So, again, what we're looking at is a narrower right-of-way than 60 feet, the east-west portion, and, and the travel lanes being less than, than 20 feet wide. So, the east-west component of Marshall Road was established, is established by Palm Beach Farms Platt from 1912, and that runs down here. You can barely see it with a laser. And the north-south component is established by a private easement that was established in 1977. That north-south component is 50 feet wide, so it's almost a 60-foot minimum. The travel lane width, the gray component of this graphic on the north-south illustrates the, the areas that are less than 20 feet wide, and again, it's a shell rock road, it's a dirt road, so it's kind of hard to identify exactly where the road is, but you can see that there's no gray shading of the east-west component, so that meets the 20-foot minimum travel lane width. The north-south component, where it's gray, it doesn't meet the width, and you'll see a couple spots there down at the south end where it's not shaded gray, and at the north end where it's not shaded gray. So, this is Marshall Road at Cleary Road, looking west. You'll see it's fairly well-maintained, and it is more than 20 feet wide at that point. This is the next component of Marshall Road going to the west, about the midpoint. This is turning north, and I want you to notice the informal curbing that's been established in that area, and we'll come back to that later. There's looking at the edge of the road. The road narrows slightly as you go north. It goes down to 10.9 feet in width, so you're looking at a variance of 9.1 feet at the northern component of it. This is the north end looking south, and these are two homes that are under construction at the very north end, just south of my client's property. You can see the road's been disrupted in there from all the construction activity, and that's turning west to go serve a parcel that's to the west of my client's property. And that's looking into the site. You can see it's a very large parcel, and it's surrounded by a nursery, 15-acre nursery operation to the east, two single-family houses on four-plus acre tracts to the west, and then the houses on Marshall Road are smaller properties. It's the only area in the Pioneer Road community that has a higher density or small lots. So, there's three criterion question. The disagreement is, as between my perspective and staff's perspective, is as to these three criteria. I don't know that I need to take all your time to go through the ones that we agree on, but I thought I'd focus just on the ones that we disagree on. So, criterion A is that special circumstances or conditions exist which are peculiar to the property and not applicable to other districts, other properties in the same district. And so, staff's perspective is that because Marshall Road serves other properties and it's, that the pool of analysis should be those other properties in the immediate area. When you look at the criterion, it's actually referring to parcels in the same district, and that's a reference to the zoning district. So, you're looking at a question of whether this property has peculiar conditions that are not applicable to other properties in that AR zoning district. I don't know how we got there.
That's it. Chip, you're no longer allowed to play with the toys.
Yeah. She's taking over. Just give me back. So, there are many properties in the AR district that don't suffer from this situation. So, you're looking at something that doesn't have to be unique here, it doesn't have to be singular to this parcel, it just has to be peculiar, different than most properties in the AR district, and most other properties in the AR district enjoy sufficient access on Cleary Road, Pioneer Road, and other roads in the area. Criterion B is the special conditions and circumstances don't result from the actions of the applicant. This is a head-scratcher for me, in terms of how staff has analyzed it. Staff has looked at it in terms of whether the special conditions and circumstances result from the desire to engage in the activity for which we're seeking a variance. In fact, the criterion is talking about the deficiency that exists as being the special condition or circumstance. So, the roadway that is insufficiently wide on the east-west component is the Palm Beach Farms Platt number three, which was recorded in 1912. The north-south component was created in 1977, so clearly, my clients did not create the conditions that necessitate the need for the right-of-way variance width. And then, the north-south component being not sufficiently wide for travel lane, that has been in service since the 60s. The first house was built out here in 1965. It's been used that way all this time, long before my clients ever acquired the property. The third criterion that we disagree on is criterion E. Staff's perspective is that we should have asked to widen the road. This is a community that's been there for years. Nobody wants their yards torn up to create 20 feet of shell rock that, over time, is just going to grow back. So, although they're technically correct on that criterion, and certainly, my client could go out and scrape out the, the grass and move whatever landscape he gets in there, it really doesn't serve any purpose to benefit the community. Again, we're looking at one more house among 17 other houses out there that are served by this road. So, there is a paving program that's being organized by some of the residents, I've talked to them about that. The president of the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association, Dennis Hickey, has volunteered to facilitate some efforts at paving out there. There's been efforts over the years to try to do that, but, again, we will, my clients will participate in that paving program if and when it comes forward. So, here's a focusing in on whether we scrape out the road. Here, we'd have to move, remove the curbing, you could move sufficiently west to avoid that driveway on the right side. Here's looking to the north. You can see the edge of the driveway on the lower-left corner, that's the edge of the 50-foot right-of-way. Again, east side looking north. You can see how the vegetation has grown in. And lastly, we have the support of the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association and the estates of the lakes of Pioneer to the north, both of which fully support this effort. Again, this comes back to the facilitation of the implementation, the fruition of the vision that's been brought to this community through the good work of staff over the recent years in adopting the Rural Enclave Comprehensive Plan Amendment in 2018, and most recently, the 2022 Rural Enclave for, for the Pioneer Road community. With that, I'll have, I'm happy to answer any, answer any questions, and we can talk about where staff and I agree on the criteria if you need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chip, before you step away from the podium, quick question for you. I just want to make sure that you're, you know, it's clear to us up here what you're asking for. In the variance, you're not asking to be different than the surrounding homes, you're actually asking to be exactly the same as the surrounding homes.
Exactly.
Use the road that they're already using...
Yes.
To live...
Yes.
Two individual, single-family homes on almost two and a half acres each.
Right.
You just want to be the same?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Staff?
All right. Olive Bailey, again, with Land Development, and this is item number seven, SV 2022-1904. Thank you, Chip, for a very great presentation. He was very thorough, so if you want me to go through every single slide, I can. This is the location of the property. As you can tell, it's just east of the northeast corner of Okeechleepa Park, west of Cleary Road, and south of Pioneer Road. It's a 4.63-acre parcel with agricultural residential zoning and low residential LR1 flu. It's currently undeveloped, and their desire is to subdivide it into two lots. Currently, the travel way or the pavement width is unpaved, so there's no wearing surface, and at the narrowest point, it's 10.9 feet wide, Marshall Road is. As Chip described, this is how Marshall Road looks coming from Cleary Road heading east. That yellow line is the platted right-of-way tract. The blue line is the current location of the road outside of that right-of-way tract. Going north-south, the orange line is within the 50-foot road easement, and then it heads east-west to where the property does get current access as a 30-foot road easement as well. So, the variance request, as Chip did state, was as soon as you subdivide land, you are now subject to the provisions of Article 11. So, Article 11 E2A2 does have a minimum legal access requirement, so there are variance requests for that, and is to allow access from the 30-foot right-of-way, 30-foot access easement, and 50-foot access easement, and then just utilizing the existing 10.9-foot travel way or the pavement, the unpaved pavement at the narrowest point. So, again, this is the existing versus required. The existing varies, and the required, based on it being agricultural residential, is a 60-foot right-of-way with 20 feet pavement without a wearing surface. So, our responsibility is to analyze the seven criteria, and if they don't meet the seven criteria, we don't recommend, we won't recommend approval of the variance request. So, these are the three, and I can go through them in detail if you'd like, but...
I don't think you need to.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we had one contact from the public in support, and staff, because they did not meet all seven, is recommending denial, and should you choose to approve, staff is recommending that one condition of approval is to widen Marshall Road's travel way, the pavement width, to that 20-foot minimum, unpaved wearing surface. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We do. We have two comment cards, and they would both like to speak, so, again, I'll call you both up. Please go to different podiums, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. So, Jamie DeCosta and Kevin Horn, please come up.
I think they support it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jamie DeCosta, I currently live at 7801 Adrauta Drive, and we're here for a 600 Marshall. This is a project where Kevin and I are best friends, business partners, and as odd as that may sound, it's our dream to live next door, raise each other's families together, next door to each other, and live in this area. This is an area that, about 20 years ago, when I was younger, in my twenties, I remember driving through this neighborhood and going, you know, when it's time for me to have a family and raise children and grow up, you know, this is an area that I'd like to do that in. And when this property became available, I thought it was an excellent opportunity, and my partner and I thought it was an amazing opportunity where we could, you know, live next door to each other, raise our families next door to each other, and have our children, you know, grow up together. So, that's why we're here, and that's why we're seeking the approval of, you know, the variance, and hopefully, that's something that you will all agree is a good idea for the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My name's Kevin Horn. I currently reside at 7520 Clark Road, West Palm Beach, or Lake Clark Shores, and just to reiterate, Jamie and I, we're best friends, business partners, we already live a street or so away, our families are very close. When Jamie first took me through this area, I fell in love with it. It's always been a dream of mine, and we talk, and we had the same dream as we do in a lot of things, that to raise our families on some nice property, and even though we are neighbors, or will potentially be neighbors here, we'll still be, I'll be farther away from him than I am my current neighbors now, so there's a lot of distance, and we just want to keep as, everything as close to the, the, as it is now, in the, in the neighborhood, and for our neighbor's sake, I'd hate to have to go in there and start digging stuff up and, you know, get off on the wrong foot with our neighbors. We just want to come in there and build some homes, two homes, and contribute to the neighborhood and be part of the community, because we already really like it, and we, we, we feel we'd be a, an asset to the community, and we look forward to being a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, any more from the public, versus to comment on this application?
Just the two.
Okay, having none?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll...
Sure.
Got a few, few comments here. So, to go on record, if you don't know, the Pioneer Road neighborhood, the Pioneer Road Rural Enclave is, is near and dear to my heart. This is my neighborhood, and for the last six years, it's been the goal of the neighborhood to develop the rural enclave, and I've been heavily a part of that, as well as being on the, the POA for a period of time. It's the reason that Commissioner Burdick originally appointed me to the zoning commission to have a better voice for the community. So, you know, just to set the record straight, you know, this neighborhood is the reason that I'm here. And what these two gentlemen are trying to do is the exact reason that I moved into the Pioneer Road neighborhood. My business partner lives next door to me, my best friend of 25 years lives next door to me on the other side. Having a community that idolizes this type of living and that is incorporated around it is very special. It's the only rural enclave community east of the Turnpike, and what the gentlemen are asking for is to be treated just like everybody else in the community, unlike the last application. Ms. Olive, the code is black and white, I understand it. It says what it says, and it's right or it's wrong. There's no gray areas, which is why we have variances and waivers and all of the other considerations. In your personal opinion, what they're asking for, does it comply with the rural nature of the community?
So, my opinion, yes, it matches with the rural nature of the community. From a technical standpoint, it doesn't meet our minimum requirements, and so, we feel that the 20-foot minimum unpaid driving surface is appropriate.
I understand. So, I'll be moving forward, asking for an approval, but I'll be asking for it without the Exhibit C, for them to widen the 17 homes' driving surface prior to reaching their property. They just want to be treated the same as everybody else, and I think that's been stated.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up to that, if I may. That was one of my questions, is, obviously, it's an enclave, it's a very tight community. The residents, I was wondering if they've been asked if they would even want to consider a widening, because it sounds like it would affect their...
So, in the neighborhood, there is a current paving project that is being taken place, and it's being flagship by Greg Weiss himself. We've already had one road improved by the paving surface, and yes, it could use the benefit of some re-grading, but it's a part of the project that the entire community is taking part of. We drive these streets every single day, every year. We have golf cart parades for Halloween and for Christmas. We go down this road, we do a U-turn at the end of it, tractor, trailer, hayride, the whole nine yards. You know, we understand exactly what the road is as a community, these guys understand what it is. There will be a, a consensus, but at the same time, I don't think we should put it on the two homeowners to go around and tear up everybody else's yard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
In walking the neighborhood to see whether there was any concern with Jamie and Kevin's effort, the conversation quickly turned to paving, and there is an effort by two of the property owners spearheading that program today, and they were thrilled to see that there were two more people that would be willing... they were thrilled to see that there were two more people that would be willing to participate in the paving program. There's 17, 18 property owners in there that are on Marshall. Of those, everyone is supportive of actually participating and paying for paving, with the exception of four or five folks as it stands right now. But we did not have a lot of conversation about ripping out the road because they were interested in getting it paved, not about whether we were going to scrape out the grass and everything else. I just, when you look at the number of cars on the road, if you scrape out the grass today, it's going to grow back in six months to a year because people just don't drive over it. So, again, we'll participate in the paving program. We just don't want to be the ones that are responsible for making the surface wider leading up to that program.
Okay. Thank you. Any other cross-examination from staff and/or the applicant? Okay. Having none, we'll bring this to the board.
I had another question, if I may. It was, it's life safety, and it was just a concern of mine, but with the turn and everything, fire trucks are able to get there and service the last parcel?
Yes. We've had a lot of technical analysis with Land Development staff on how the road lays out. Because the property is going to be cut north-south, creating a northern lot, we're actually creating a new roadway into the property, and we've ensured that we meet the 60-foot radius to be able to swing into the property. There was never a question about being able to swing where the road turns from west to north, or being able to swing where the road turns north to west. So, yeah, but we'll be going through the waiver plating process, and there will be more technical review in that process. But again, we've already done all that analysis with Land Development staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think...
Olive speak for herself.
Yeah.
No, that's correct. We've flushed that out, we've had conversations with fire about the access. Again, I do want to stress that the minimum width that fire requires is 20 feet. They need paved access to provide their services as well. So, that's where that 20-foot minimum comes in, to be able to provide that kind of service. And we're not asking them for a full pavement section. So, I feel like that's been the impression, that we're asking them to pave it completely. We're just asking for it to be widened without the wearing surface.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, to me, that's the biggest question. Personally, I'm okay with the variance. I think it complies with all the criteria. Question is the condition of approval, if it does move forward, that additional... For me, I think the community, it's a tight-knit community, should take care of its own. So, you know...
Ms. Chairman, if I may?
Should we put the burden on the applicant to take care of this dead-end road on his own or not, or should it be part of the community effort?
And I agree with you. I think it should be a part of the community effort in those regards. I mean, fire services the homes now, and it's not a 20-foot wearing surface. So, although they require it, they're doing it now. You know, it's not...
Ms. Chairman, if I may? The surface, although it may have some grass growing up, as you saw from the photos, it's not a clear line, a clear delineation of shell rock to grass. But in reality, it's stable. It will carry dump trucks, it will carry fire trucks, and it's plenty wide to be able to drive a fire truck up there without getting stuck. And that's really the issue here. Because it's, again, it's sufficiently wide without any obstacles, it's just that the grass has crept into the driving area.
Yeah, and it makes sense because it is a dead-end road, so how much traffic is on it?
Exactly.
If it was in the middle of the road of an arterial or road, then that's a different scenario, right?
Exactly.
So, it's my opinion. Question. When we, for these variances, do we need to approve each one individually?
No.
Can we do a blanket one for all seven criteria?
The recommendation is to adopt resolution, well, it would be to adopt a resolution approving Item 7A. Item 7A includes a subdivision variance to allow access from the existing 30-foot road easement with no sidewalks, and it necessarily includes, as staff has indicated in the staff report, all, is it three? Three separate sub-variances, Olive? There's three parts to this?
That we're, that we're, say it one more time.
How many, how many separate variances are part of the request? Is it three?
Two.
Two, okay.
One is for the right-of-way width, and one is for the actual pavement surface.
And your recommendation to approve includes both of those?
Correct.
Or, sorry, the recommend, the staff report analyzes both of them together?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Question on the right. On the right-of-way width, it looks like it was 50 feet all the way north-south?
It's an easement, 50 feet north-south. Correct.
And where is it not 50 feet? The east-west portion?
The east-west portion, which is the blue line, and then the south, the east-west portion at the south, which is the yellow line. So, the yellow line is a 30-foot right-of-way tract, and then the other two lines are easements.
And you're still able to pave those eventually? They're still able to pave those regardless? It's 30 or 50?
Sure, yes. So, the deficiency in the roadway width is mainly north to south. Chip's picture showed that, that Mr. Carlson's picture showed that east-west is wide enough at the south. North is where you're going to find the pinch point of 10, about 11 feet.
Okay.
Chip, do you want to, do you want to put up that picture so they can visually see at the end of Marshall on the north end? I believe one of your pictures actually showed, there you go. So, this, this picture is indicating the north end of Marshall Road where it then turns again to the west, going into a nursery. Does that, does that help you with your visualization, Mark?
No, I'm fine with that. I'm just curious what the right-of-way width was there, and they plan on paving this, do they have the right-of-way width on that east-west portion to pave it?
So, that's 30 feet there.
It is 30 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, that was the question.
Okay.
And Mr.?
Go ahead.
Sure. Since you're getting to the motion, a couple things. Of course, you can approve both variances together, you're more than welcome to handle them separately. And just in the future, if you ever wanted to approve one and deny one, you could always do them separately. But here, if you're approving them together, you can do it in one motion. As far as the motion, since it is, is not consistent with staff's recommendation, if you could just make a finding in the motion that all of the criteria, that you determine that all the criteria have been met, that'd be helpful.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion approving Item 7A with all criteria met to coincide with the rural nature of the Pioneer Road Rural Enclave neighborhood.
Depending ULDC standards?
Depending ULDC standards.
Second. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Kern, second by Commissioner Beatty.
Oh, I'm sorry. That did not include the condition of approval, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You look confused.
All right. Who was the second? I thought it was Kelly.
Oh, was it Kelly? Oh, okay.
So, this will still include one condition of approval, right?
The disclosure condition.
The disclosure condition.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the attorney, Scott?
No.
Any comments?
No comments. Thank you for a long meeting. You know, I mean, bearing with us. So, thank you. Today was longer than most.
Longer what I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, it's a longer, we've been doing these, like, short meetings, but thank you all for sticking with us this morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for organizing as such.
Chairman, motion adjourned?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.